Welcome, as always, members of the Board of Directors of the Harlan Community School District. Glad to see everybody here and glad to see so many shining faces here. Good to see everybody. Welcome. And so we are beginning the September 19th, 2022 meeting of the Board, and we'll call the meeting to order as we do have a quorum, I believe. Maybe Jody will be coming, but Jade isn't feeling ill, so she should be here soon. Let's see. First thing, I think there is the public forum. Are you going to speak to that a little bit tonight, Al?
I'll be happy to read that. In accordance with Policy 213, Public Participation in Board Meetings, the Board recognizes the importance of citizen participation in school district matters. In order to assure citizens are heard and board meetings are conducted efficiently and in an organized manner, the Board has set aside this specific time for public comment. Citizens wishing to address the Board during the public comment must notify the Board Secretary no later than two hours prior to the Board meeting. The Board President will recognize these individuals to make their comments at the appropriate time during public comment. Citizens wishing to present petitions to the Board may also do so at this time. Board, however, will only receive the petitions and not act upon them or their contents. Normally, speakers will be limited to five minutes per individual, or such time limit do not exceed 45 minutes total public participation time. However, the Board President may modify this time limit if deemed appropriate or necessary. Public comment is a time set aside for community input, but the Board will not discuss or take any action on any matter during public comment. Only individuals recognized by the Board President will be allowed to speak. Comments by others are out of order. If disrupted, individual causing disruption may be asked to leave the Board meeting. So that is the Policy 213.
Okay, and I've got a little bit of jet lag because I just got in, and so I'm not quite up to speed as far as, I think we have somebody that requested. Can you tell us what it is?
Yes, Paul Schweri. It's right behind you. Would you like to speak?
Timing that you would like?
I'm going to try and get it done in five. I'm going to try and get to a JV football game in Glenwood yet, like, the second half of it. And you should also thank your time. I appreciate it. You should honestly also thank Mrs. Hubbard because she told me about the five-minute deal, and judging by what I wrote, you should thank her. Anyway, I'm going to go ahead and show you. Is it okay if I stand?
Yeah. No, you're comfortable.
Put this down because I can't go by that anyway. So I'm here to talk about girls wrestling. Wrestling is dear to my heart, and I'm going to talk a little bit about my family before I get into other things that I have seen that I may not agree with. I'm Paul Schweri. My wife and I have seven kids. We both graduated from Harlan. Four of my kids graduated from Harlan. I have four boys and three girls. All four of my boys wrestle for Harlan. My youngest first time in high school experience was last year. I have two boys wrestling in college right now. You could say that wrestling is dear to my heart. We're a wrestling family. Not generational. No one in my family ever wrestled, but my kids have, and I have seen the impact. Not the successes, not the time on the mat, but the whole thing, everything from the heartbreak to the challenges to the success has made them who they are today. Well-rounded, hard-working, good people. The determination, the discipline, the never-quits environment that wrestling brings, as in any sport, is part of them. Everything about it is positive, in my opinion. I've seen it. I've lived it. I'm the president of the club. My wife's secretary of the wrestling club. I'm not here, I'm here as a parent. I'm not here to represent them. That's different. I'm here as a parent. So, that being said, when I found out that girls wrestling was sanctioned last year, this is great. My daughter came home from school, my oldest, well, not my oldest daughter, my one's still in school here. She's a senior. She's going to be on the first girls' Harlan high school team to represent Harlan. She's going to wear the singlet. She's going to represent. She's excited. She's going to be like the rest of her family, at least the boys. She cannot speak more highly. She's going to start working out. She's, she didn't try out for, she was a wrestling cheerleader last year. She wasn't going to be a wrestling cheerleader this year. She is going to be a wrestler. Great. So, they called, asked for student participation last year, I don't know, February, March? Don't have dates. It was announced the end of January that it was sanctioned. They asked for students to come to this office showing interest in ten. I think they had eleven high schoolers, returning high schoolers that were going to be involved in it. I don't know how many middle school. I don't have a middle schooler, so I wouldn't have been involved in that anyway. So, anyway, great. I know Coach Murtaugh reached out to them, asked them to spread the word out. Get anybody involved that's interested. Great. I don't think it ever went out to the mass, to the public, to the parents about this. There wasn't support from the outside looking in. Maybe from the inside, I'm not in the school. But if you have middle schoolers, kids that don't drive, even kids that do, you got a parental position, or participation, excuse me, to get them to wrestle. You have to encourage it. You have to run them to practices. If they don't drive, it's a commitment. When the two-a-days start, you're here at 6:45. Well, 6:30 to be ready to go. There's a lot of commitment involved. Didn't hear much about it in that interim part. Yes, it was talked about. Yes, they had people that were interested in it. Come this year? Didn't hear much. No emails went out, not mass emails, other than this past Friday, the first one, to the parents, to the community went out. There was some internal talk a week and a half ago about, there was a meeting called for those interested. An email was sent out, I think, to five high schoolers. Those were the ones that were still showing interest. Three middle schoolers. Sent an email out, talked to them. Still nothing to the parents at this point this year. The girl showed up. My daughter had asked to work for an overseas job. Heard nothing. She had a sudden meeting with Mr. Pathee to get information. We found out it's going to Riverside. Well, that just left the air out of her bubble. I mean, she, or a balloon. She wanted to wrestle for Harlan. We can't wrestle for Harlan. We can't go to Riverside. That hurt, broke my heart. I had to do something. I started researching. What can I do? What can we do? What's the timeline? We got a month, basically, before it starts. In Harlan, if the football team goes well, not going to win. It'll be longer. But a week and a half ago is enough time to plan, really. So, I started communicating with Mr. Pathee, sending out emails. I'll make this quick then. If you give me another minute, is that possible? So, anyway, started emailing. I did research about Title IX. I did all kinds of things. Equal and fair practice time. We got a schedule of what Riverside is proposing, and they were good to us. They talked really good about how they can try and modify this. They can try and do this. They can try and do that. Their practices start between 3:45 and 4 o'clock. If we even would bust them there, we're not going to get there at the earliest till 4 o'clock. Logistically, it's not possible. We're going to miss out on practice time. They get done at 6 o'clock down there, half an hour back, get everybody dropped off, everything. Girls aren't getting home till 4 o'clock. We're not, it's not equal and fair practice time if they just segregate the girls and ship them away. We can't build a program with it being shipped away. We got to have it in Harlan. We just have to. I even asked those coaches that night. Would you have the success you've had so far if you wouldn't have had this in-house? Would you have the participation if you shipped off your girls somewhere else? Would you have that here? They agreed, no. You got to start somewhere. Starting there would not be my first thought. Have it here in Harlan. Have it where the girls can be seen. They're going to be shipped away. No one will ever see them. They're the swim team that most people don't even know Harlan has because they send them to Lewis Central because we don't have the facilities to accommodate them. The legal aspect, too, is you're not shipping boys. You're just shipping girls. You're discriminating, in my view, by shipping them away. Have it here in Harlan. We have eight months to plan, and in a week and a half, we're supposed to come up with a plan on what to do with girls' activities here. Have it in Harlan. One last note in conclusion, and this is just throwing it out there because I mentioned Title IX. When we had our meeting with Glenwood, Mr. Pathee asked I don't bring that up, and out of respect for him and this program, the school, I didn't bring it up. But now I am. Iowa added girls' wrestling to their program last year. Why? To settle a lawsuit. It cost them $400,000, court fees, lawyer fees, and as part of the settlement, they had to start a girls' wrestling program. I'm not threatening anything. I'm just telling you to look it up. That's what they ended up having to do. I'm done. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Have a great meeting. Don't envy you. Thank you. Yeah, we will. He's the kicker, so just hoping to go put in the post. Hope he has scorecards.
Very good.
Yes, that's what I mean.
We don't discuss that at this time, and so we'll move on to the agenda, which is Item C, Approval of the Agenda. And I imagine everybody's had a chance to look it over. Any questions or comments about the Agenda C? If not, could I have a motion to approve the Agenda?
So moved.
Jody, and then we have Greg seconding it, Catherine. Okay, so we're up to Item D, Discussion Items, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Barnett.
I just have a couple things. I just wanted to remind you to look at that redistricting map that we've gotten out, and we will put that on the agenda, but just a reminder to look at it to see. And of note, all of us, all of the, everybody's in a district, so we don't have to have any additional. Yeah, this is good. So, yes, thank you, Jim. So this was just, they just looked at the census and had to just kind of shift a few things here, a few things here. And if we don't like it, we don't have to accept this either. We can shift otherwise. But since we didn't have to move anyone, it was the best. Just a reminder for that, and then I wanted to say we received two different grants, so we're excited about that. Courtney Crum wrote a grant, a statewide grant, and $42,500 prize, I guess, if you want to say so. Mostly for at-risk and for paying for some salaries. Actually, we're going to be able to use some of that for that. And then she also helped me write a grant that was for $10,000 for our Friends and Rachel Clubs and the Kindness Clubs. That just helps pay for the extra hours and the stipend because those clubs require a lot of hours, extra hours, kind of like a coach does as well. So just that, that will pay a little bit for that. And it also gives them money for just snacks and different things that we don't usually buy during the school day for the Kindness Club. So that was, that's $50,000 worth of grants, which we're pretty excited about. And then I wanted to share real quick, just, we have a therapeutic classroom now in our elementary, and we are sharing it with Green Hills AEA. We're collaborating with them. And they are providing staff for it, so they provided a teacher, a behavior specialist, a para, and a weekly access to a therapist and a social worker. Jody, we can move that this way if you want.
It's okay.
It's on wheels. We can just slide that.
No, I'm good.
And currently, there's four students in there, and they're grades first through fifth, and they get some, they might have some extra behavioral or therapeutic needs, and a lot of them, every single one of them has an individualized education plan or an IEP, especially with. They get fun stuff, just like our kids do, but they also are just in a classroom where they are able to focus on more social, emotional pieces. So right now, we have students in there from Tri-Center, Manning, and IK Manning in Riverside. And our responsibilities are to give the classroom space, a safe room space, administrative support, so Ann and Jeff and I can help if needed. We haven't had enough help too much in the tuition and billing. But we also receive a tuition-free student. So we're going to approve something later on. It's a bill for a contract with Children's Square and other places in Council of Us that have these schools like this, whereas we're paying daily, a daily rate for students to attend, plus we're transporting them there. So this is kind of a win-win for us, so we don't have to pay the transportation nor the daily tuition rate. So, and then I just threw up some pictures. These are just pictures of what they have in the, that's the solar system. They just have lots of different kinds of furniture, and those are the little guys. Today, I was in there, and they were like, "Take our picture." So, there they are. I just wanted to share that because it's a good thing, and it's, I know there are other districts that have gotten grants for therapeutic classrooms statewide, but I feel like this is a better proposition for us because we don't, that grant was given, you get like $150,000 of startup cash or startup money, but then that doesn't pay, we don't have to pay for the teacher's salary, the para's salary. We're not paying any of those salaries. So it's long-term, much better for us. We don't have to find money to pay for the rest.
Did I miss it? Where is that located? What building?
It's in Jeff's, and it's, and it's in a really good spot, so it's right by the door. So the, like, when Tri-Center drops the little guy off, it's right there by the door so they can go in and out. They don't have to go through the school much. They will have an email address with us, and just, I don't know. Yeah. I don't, which direction was it? Southwest.
Which kind of.
Sometimes she has problems with right and left.
Good. That's good.
It's been really good. They've done a nice job.
Yeah, they, there's plenty of adults there, and they're, they just seem to have all, they have boys right now, so. And then I guess the one big thing I forgot to announce was the bond issue. And the timeline for that, so the next phase is just the design phase. So actually, the architects and Patrick from DeNovo reached out, and they're going to be here Wednesday just to pick the brains of teachers and get their minds thinking as to what we can do design-wise. So they'll be with each building for about a half an hour, I think, is what we've decided.
And who is that? Patrick and?
Patrick and then CB and CMBA, so Courtney.
Courtney, okay.
And then we're meeting with Travis, too, to get the timelines set on the bonding.
On the bond, we're meeting with Riverside. Financial side of things. And then Davis has a presentation. Do you want me to put it up here, Davis?
Yeah, that'd be great. Do I have the buzzer on me, too?
No. I know. I feel terrible when I say that happens.
You guys let me know. Yeah, that'd be fine. Okay, so lots of conversations going on about this for a long time amongst the wrestling staff. Coach Murtaugh's been very good about this. We talked amongst our admin team, been in constant communication with other ADs, not just in the conference, but in the region, too, about how we should do this. So just a kind of a little bit of a timeline for what's happened in the state of Iowa. For a long time, obviously, there's been unsanctioned wrestling, meaning the girls' union hasn't, you know, legally brought it in. I don't legally describe the word, but hasn't had it as a certified or sanctioned sport that they promote and regulate. So AAU is a very common type of wrestling, but there's other associations you can wrestle for independently, and that's been going on for a very long time. The numbers in the state of Iowa are really booming. In 2019, they held the first kind of high school state championship. Again, that was unsanctioned. And it wasn't really well-attended, but the numbers are going up exponentially. If you can see there, the numbers were around 70 potentially girls, according to NFHS, National Federation for, like, high school sports. I thought there was about 70 girls in Iowa that were wrestling. That would be a hard number to track, so that could be off a little bit. But about 70 in 2018, and as of last year with the state wrestling championships, they had over 1,000 girls that were in the total field that could have qualified, just over 1,000. So I think, I think the second year, there were a few hundred, so it's just, it's gone up a few hundred every year, really, the last three, four years. And so they anticipate that growth again. It could be close. Some are saying maybe 1,500 this year in the state of Iowa. A heavy majority are still in the central and eastern side of the state. The western side's kind of lagging behind a little bit in those numbers, but I think you'll see it continue to grow. At any rate, well, there's one famous wrestler there from Underwood there. Molly, she was a state champion last year, and I think 105 pounds, the lightest weight, probably. But she was a freshman and won it all, and they're hoping she'll be a, you know, girl's first four-time state champion, potentially. But anyway, there's some very good wrestling in the area. It's just not as densely populated in terms of wrestling numbers here as it might be in other pockets of the state. At any rate, last year, at the end of the state tournament, so that would have been January, and then into February, they made the announcement that the girls' union would sanction girls' wrestling for this coming season. So that was very exciting. And I will say right now, I think, you know, I was excited at the time, still am excited. I think on social media, I had some posts about it, and if I could do it again, I probably would have put something out to the parents. We had no idea what it looked like at the time, of course, but still could have put something out there, not knowing what it might be. But I know at least through social media and other engagements, we were talking with the students, talking, you know, internally at least about this possibility moving forward. Going to go to the next slide, please? Just a really generic timeline of kind of how things have broken down, and there's been some things in between, but that initial meeting, again, Coach Murtaugh did a great job, kind of rallying the girls around, trying to drum up interest internally, and there were, I think, 10 or 11 girls at that initial meeting. And that was, it was brand-new, a lot of excitement. We had a number of girls that hadn't participated in anything else, so maybe it would be their first sport, or maybe they were just, you know, just interested in trying to see what this was all going to be about because it was absolutely brand-new. And we didn't have any rules, didn't know when the season was going to be, didn't know weight classes, didn't know if they could wrestle boys or any of the parameters. It was just, hey, this is going to be a thing moving forward? What's out there? You know, so he did a good job. He communicated with the girls, was communicating with me. That was very, very early, though, and again, the girls' union didn't have any guidelines for us at that point. So I think, again, he had another meeting in March. I think it was late March. I don't have the date in front of me. For some reason, the 25th is in my head, but don't take that for 100%. But anyway, I think late March, he had another meeting, and we were about seven to eight girls at that time, which it might have been the day of the week that we had it, and three girls are gone. I don't know. But maybe a little less interest, but still a good number nonetheless. And we still didn't have a lot of specificity about what was going to happen. Most of the initial information from the girls' union came out in April. And still, there was a lot of gray area even till like about a month ago where most of this was solidified. But I can't remember if there was any other unofficial meetings in between, but for certain, at the end of the school year, we called one more meeting, and that was for all wrestlers, girls and boys, to talk about summer plans. Again, who's interested, who's going to participate, kind of the opportunities for weightlifting, open mat time, what camps they were going to go to, some of those things. So girls' and boys' numbers were there, and again, the girls' numbers were, I want to say, five to seven at that time. Again, it's maybe the day, but that's about what we had. So we're thinking we could get maybe a handful or so at max at that time, which was good for not having anybody ever wrestle before. We don't have, in the high school at that time, we didn't think we had anybody that had any AAU or unsanctioned wrestling experience at all either. So, yeah, no wrestling. But a couple in the middle school that had shown some interest and that had been on the mat, so that was exciting. We knew we would, you know, want to offer it and make sure we had opportunities for everybody, whether they were here or elsewhere, if that's what it was going to be. So then they went through the summer, kind of did their thing. We got more guidance, and once we were back to school, we held an initial meeting about three weeks ago. And that was communicated to all students there to, that they were invited. And that's par for the course for any other activity that we do. Again, in the offseason, we drum up interest, and usually, there's one offseason meeting, but this was brand-new, so we had three last year, four last year, and then one this year even, to try to really see who we had. And we had four girls that showed up, and one came later, so five girls total there in the high school. I kind of asked them two categories. One, you're gung-ho. You're going to do it no matter what, even though we might have it here, we might have it elsewhere. One girl was a solid yes. We can do this no matter what. Four girls were like, not sure. Like, we're interested, but we're just not sure if we can do it, and we want to kind of, you know, see where this goes and how many other girls go out, and that sort of thing. So not throw you on the spot, Mr. Mueller was kind of doing the same thing and drumming up numbers and felt there was maybe two to three girls in the middle school at that time that showed some interest. Fair to say. So from there, we reached out to those interested parties one more time and got in contact and had a parent meeting with the Riverside staff. And I'll backtrack to see how we got there, but throughout this whole timeline, thank you. No, you're good. Throughout this whole timeline, again, we've been discussing as an admin team. We had discussions internally, discussing with other schools within the Hawkeye Ten, and, you know, the WIC, the Western Iowa Conference, some local schools, to see kind of what their plan is and what they were doing. And most are very slow, and I don't want to say hesitant, but they're really going to see what happens once we get closer to the season. I know at this time, there are only three of the 11 Hawkeye Ten schools that are having an independent program or plan to offer an independent program. And that number could go up. I know a couple of schools have said they're just, they're waiting to see. And I don't know how long they're going to wait, but we're kind of up against it. And so I've really been pushing the last couple Hawkeye Ten meetings and amongst my colleagues to decide what we'd like to do, almost as a conference, or see what's out there to put our girls in the best position. But at any rate, internally, you know, we have, we still have to make a decision on our own. So, whoops, I'm messing with mine. Kind of some of the season timeline and details that have since been released, again, this is a lot over the late summer, and some of it, there is just another newsletter with some of this information that came out just last week. So again, it is, this is brand-new for everybody across the state. They got a brand-new person running it at the girls' union, Aaron Kurtley, and they're doing a tremendous job. There's just a lot of moving pieces on how we're going to run girls' wrestling in the state of Iowa now and in the future. So anyway, some of the details, pertinent details are there, as you can see. They have decided to go to one classification for all girls' wrestling, and that's, again, from the girls' union explained. They did that to try to encourage sharing, at least initially. Most schools, for other sports that have different classifications, you might not want to get into a sharing agreement because you might bump up a class. And you're going against, for us, we, you know, we might go against 4A competition versus where we're at, mostly 3A competition. For most sports, some girls work for 4A, but we're back and forth. But when you enter a sharing agreement, most times, you have to take on the enrollment numbers of the other school that you're sharing with. Does that make sense? So to encourage sharing, they've eliminated that gun, one classification for now. And they'll have 14 weight classes to start, so that's, you know, data to use a little bit on how maybe you want to field a team or how many numbers you want to have to field a team to have at least a chance for team success. But again, we're dealing with individuals, too, so it's just a data point. It's been obviously determined, as you can see there, it's only female versus female competition that's allowed. So that's an important thing as we navigate these waters. You could have the okay if everybody's in agreeance to practice boys against girls if you'd want to. That is something we can entertain, potentially, but the competition under girls' union umbrella has to be female against female. Questions there? Okay, so what are our next steps? What are we looking at? Again, it's tough, and this is something I battled, and we've had discussions round and round about. What's going to be best for us right now, but what's also best for our girls in the program moving forward? You know, you could have a lot of different possibilities depending on how many girls actually show up in the wrestling room and hit the mat. If we've got one or two girls in the wrestling room to practice against, that can make for very difficult practices and competition and ability to get better, especially if they're different skill set, different size, all those different things. We don't have a magic number. different things. We don't have a magic number, okay? We've talked about some different numbers and what it might take and what it might look like, but again, until they actually get out there on the mat, it's a very difficult thing to say, and it's hard for the girls. They don't know. They've never done it here. If we had four, five, eight, 10 girls that have been wrestling AAU and knew really what it was about, I think we'd feel more confident in what we could or should do, but we don't have that right now. So part of that, too, again, is internal, how do we get to where we want to be, which is probably hosting, you know, a very strong girls' wrestling program here in Harlan. We've got to get the numbers. We've got to get girls interested, yes. We've got to build that up. We've got to kind of foster that in the little leagues, you know, and then into middle school. When we have the numbers, or again, it's kind of a, ties in together. If you have that perfect leader and somebody that's really dynamic and can go out and recruit and get girls to go out, you're going to get numbers. But can we get a coach in place without having interest or the numbers there that justify having a paid coach? And then if it's not a paid coach, what does, what does that look like for equity fairness and for our girls if it's a volunteer coach? You know, so those are some of the layers and things we're contemplating with those decisions. So the cooperative sharing agreement is there. Again, encouraged by the state for most of the schools that don't do it. There's a lot of examples in the nearby area. I would say, again, the majority of Hawkeye 10 schools are going to share. A lot of the WIC schools are going to share, so the surrounding areas, many of them are. There's a lot of wrestling in Carroll, so I know they'll have a team, but most of the area teams are, like I said, sharing. Lewis Central will probably be able to have their own. That's a big population base, and they've kind of had that going for a while. So vast majority around is sharing. Doesn't mean that's what we have to do, but I talked to a lot of different schools, reached out to me to see what their plans were, what their leadership structure was. And again, most didn't have a female coach hired, meaning they didn't have a coach to lead the female program, should specify. Now, three, those three that I mentioned, I think one of the three, at least one of the three, I should double check, one of the three for sure is an assistant boys' coach that's also leading their girls' program. So it's not even a solely dedicated person to lead the girls' program, but somewhat semantics. But talked to a lot of schools. The one that really stood out to me and one that was really wanting to also promote girls' wrestling and had a strong background was Riverside. Riverside has two coaches hired specifically for female wrestling only. They don't coach the boys. Head coach is on the executive board for girls' wrestling in the state, so super in tune to what's going on there. The assistant coach is 20 years of coaching experience there. The head boys' coach is as passionate as their girls' coaches about having more people co-op, more people sharing, getting girls' wrestling going. So the energy and excitement from them and the structure that they had was very enticing, where most people didn't have a plan or didn't want to entertain having Harlan girls if we had them. I also happen to know their athletic director was a longtime head coach at Creston that had multiple state appearances and state champions, and so the whole alignment they had at Riverside, plus their pedigree and care for the sport, made it attractive for us. I want to put, if we have to send our girls somewhere, I wanted to send them where I knew they were going to get tremendous coaching and get practices against other girls. If I need to speed this up. We're doing okay? And they have that. So this is going to be their fourth year having girls' wrestling there. Again, it wasn't sanctioned, but they took their girls elsewhere to participate and lead them. So that was really exciting. They had, well, I think they said they had 15 girls in their middle school alone last year wrestling, and they're hoping for very similar numbers this year. Again, they had a number of eighth graders that bumped up, but they've done really well. They sent some girls onto college to wrestle, and they just, they care, they're willing to work with us, they're willing to let us kind of do whatever to make it work, at least for this first year. We can wear Harlan singlets, warmups. They'll, they offered to come up here for some of the practices. They offered to let us host a meet here. They did a tremendous job with their presentation. I was just very encouraged by what they had to say when they came up for their meeting and all the conversations that I've had with them. Their boards approved us to join if we so choose. So most of those hurdles are there, that we still would have some definite work to do in terms of logistics and some of those things, but if that's what's best, that option's there, and I think internally as admin team, we feel strongly that would be our best option if that's what we wanted to do in terms of sharing. However, I listened to the parents, got some more feedback. I tried to drum up more interest, sent out another blast email to parents, guardian, students. Said we could recognize the girls' wrestlers that are signed up at some sort of pep rally, homecoming, well, you know, we can blast it out there as best we can. But the numbers are going to be what they're going to be. Hopefully, they're high, and we're going to try to hire a coach last minute if we have the numbers to do it. But with the numbers that we've seen so far, it's hard to justify it in saying that's what's best for our girls to compete and grow and get better, especially if Riverside is willing to work with us as well as they are. So, you know, moving forward, again, I'm willing to give it a little bit more time to try to grow the numbers, and I'm willing to do whatever I can to help promote it. I don't think Mr. Mueller and the admin team is too. We're all supportive. We want girls' wrestling to be a success. But again, if the girls' numbers aren't there, I think to start out, and we can go year by year, we've got to put them in the best, you know, the best spot, give them the best experience they have. We do have some younger girls that are experienced and really wanting to be great. And so, again, I think that's an opportunity where you're putting them in a room with other girls and going to get great coaching all the time, where we can't guarantee that at this point right here, and that's hard. I wish we had that person. At this time, we don't. Yes?
Is Riverside having other schools join?
They're not this year. They have offered. There's a lot of sharing going on, like the Valkyrie Wrestling Club and KM, Southwest Valley, Atlantic, like a bunch of those schools are joining. But no, they're not having anybody else at this point, although they have said they've gotten some enrollment in from the nearby area, because they have such a strong culture there. You know, hopefully, we're going to get some of that, you know, and build it back here, and maybe that will be a drawing point for us eventually. But no, not to my knowledge, they're not having anybody else in there. Good question. So where I'm at, continue to monitor our numbers right now, give it a little bit of time. If we get to adequate numbers, what we feel is adequate to maybe try to hire a coach, we do our best. We give it a tight window, because we are up against it a little bit, but blast it out as best we can and try to recruit somebody here to be our girls' head coach, and try to do it. And if we don't get to that, I think we have a great option in place. We'll continue to evaluate it as the season goes on, and in the postseason, again, try to drum up more interest and keep it building and see what we could do for the season's stuff.
If we were to start a girls' program here, would we have the ability to draw from anyone, any of the schools around here? Do you think we could do what Riverside's doing, bringing kids here?
It's, although it's late, I
If we, if we, if we were set up, I mean,
I do think it's possible. I do think it's possible.
My guess is Dantison has their own program. I just, I saw a lot of girls' wrestling.
They do not. They will not have a high school girls' program.
Interesting.
As of today, I did talk to their ID, but
So if it were a school, we could, we could maybe recruit down here.
Yeah, potentially.
If we were close, theoretically.
Potentially, yeah. They're, I'm on my camera, but they're in a very wait-and-see situation there. They must feel like they don't have it in the high school, but they might youth-wise. I think if they did drum up interest, they kind of talked about going to Carroll, but not out of the realm of possibilities. Yeah.
Davis, you did say that we did this with bowling, so at one point, bowling was not here when it first got sanctioned, and now it's here. So, I mean, it has drummed up lots of interest.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And I think we went with a volunteer coach for three years in bowling, and then eventually got it sanctioned for both boys and girls, and then it first hired out one coach, and then it eventually evolved into two, because the numbers, you know, justified that, and we've got strong numbers still. Again, I would mention that, I've talked with the girls' union many times, and Aaron Kurtley's the head of that, a lot of communication, and we're definitely in line with what's going on around the state in terms of how we've gone about this. Talked to Iowa Western's head women's wrestling coach, and gotten feedback there, and again, everybody's very positive. And even the Riverside staff said, yep, it was great that they could build it there, but when it came to what would be best, what they thought was best for our girls this year, they said to share. And that's what most of these lead sources have said. But again, I'm willing to wait a little bit longer and see if we can get the numbers to where it justify trying to get a coach here, absolutely.
And when did the practice date start? I mean, when?
High school girls' wrestling starts on Halloween. Easy one for me to remember, anyway.
So about five weeks?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Davis. You've got student accolades. So Jeff, want to talk about your elementary?
Yeah, so we have citizen of the week. And just, I don't know if I explained this to you guys last year, but every Friday, we have a student who is what we call our cow, citizen of the week. And then we have one staff member that gets nominated, and we go by grade level, so it starts with fifth grade, then fourth grade, then third grade, and then we have our pillars of character. And so basically, you get selected, you get nominated by your grade level, and then get picked from there. And basically, people who have gone above and beyond, we have so many good kids, you know, so it's not like there's a whole bunch of them, but, you know, we try to go, kids that are going above and beyond, you know. Sometimes it's a special event, they might have helped someone, or they might have done something even, you know, extraordinary, kind of like Mrs. Landsman in this picture. So I can tell a funny story here. So Mrs. Landsman has been a high school teacher for her whole career, and now she's our tag teacher. And she, on her first elementary duty of her life, you know, parents are dropping off kids and kindergarten kids, and this mom drops off her kid, and this kid is gone, you know. He just takes off because he doesn't want her to leave. So Mrs. Landsman, if I would have done this, I'd still be at least physical therapy by now. She sprinted from the front of the building and helped catch this student who was significantly younger, but not as fast as Mrs. Landsman. So that's why she got the first staff citizen of the week, the staff cow. That's why they got to see the whole steam cast, you know, so. And we actually have some more, but I'll put those on next week, or next month, because we've had a couple since then. But William Sanquist was a fourth grader, and Olivia Echols was the other student, but I got to thinking there was one that I missed on there. A school nurse also is, I'll put her on next month. That way you guys get to see her picture. So those are the three for this month, but there's only about 30 kids a year, you know, out of the elementary, which has just under 700 students. So kids look forward to it. We have an assembly every Friday. You're more than welcome to come. It's every Friday at 8 o'clock. We start off with a little chant about being champions, and, you know, every Friday, we just talk about how to be good citizens, and take pictures. We invite parents, grandparents come in, and so it's kind of a little fun thing that we do every Friday.
Thanks, Mr. Kerr. Mr. Mueller, what you got?
Yeah, I got some really great volunteer students that have, working with Mrs. Dare, to put up bulletin boards throughout the school in the hallway with some character education themes behind there. So appreciate their time, that they're willing to give up out of their study hall to come and do that. So those are some kiddos there that were designing three different bulletin boards. Some other things, we, some extracurricular things are off and going, or cross-country teams are running, or football teams are playing, and volleyball. We have marching band that's starting this Saturday, so for the next three weeks, they'll be marching, whether it's at our homecoming parade and at Shenandoah and Clorinda. So the extracurriculars are off and going, kind of at the middle school, and we have over 80% of the seventh and eighth graders that are involved, at least one extracurricular. So that's good.
And Casey and Davis.
Yeah, at the high school, school's off to a great start. I've really enjoyed seeing how involved kids are at all levels. You know, football game last Friday, you saw kids everywhere. The spirit clinic, I left, is there a picture of the cheerleaders?
It was already, oh.
We were already done, okay. I sent one. I took a picture of, the bus is pulled up, and the high school cheerleaders were getting all of the elementary kids off the bus, and they're like, go, go, go. And the kids are going, and they're like, nobody's listening. And it just, oh, and then they're like, just listen to me, everybody, listen. It just made me laugh, and I thought, oh, I hope we get some teachers out of this group. They did that, and then I look over, and there's just, there's just kids everywhere doing something and helping, and everybody knew what they were, you know, their job, and, I mean, it was just, just a sight to see at all levels. In classes, you can see there's some, some science classes. I'm trying to remember what that was, is the thumbs up. They were trying to see, learning how to use microscopes. I'm looking at the bottom right there.
Biology students conducted an experiment.
Thank you.
Insects.
Insects, yeah. They were, they were using microscopes and trying to see their heartbeat, to count their heartbeat as a control group, but then to compare, and then they were going to give them some sort of medicine the next day and compare the heartbeat, you know, after they had some, some medicine or drugs or something. The bottom left.
These are drugs at a school board.
That's what they were doing.
The insects, the insects.
Once, once we did the insects. I was trying to say medicine, but that's not what it was. I think they were fine, but the bottom left is a picture. We did a senior panel the first week of school, so I had for freshmen. So I had the, the freshmen, I knew they weren't going to listen very well the first day of school. So we got them in, got them settled, sent them off to class, and then let them go through a few days of high school, brought them back in, and I had a panel of seniors who kind of went through and did what I wish I would have known if I was, when I was a freshman about high school. And the kids, the seniors did a great job. I mean, I barely spoke. They went through, and they were, they had so much great, great advice for kids. The freshmen asked some good questions. My favorite was, am I going to feel lost like this forever? And I said, I agree. But yeah, that was great. So just, yeah, it's just been a really good start. I just love to see how involved kids are, how much they're learning, the teachers' relationships with them. It's just, you know, I'm trying to learn names, more names every day are starting to come to me, and I quiz myself, and I'm just getting to know them a little bit more, and it helps so much when you can make a connection. So I'm trying to cover classes as much as possible, and
Number one sub in the school right now.
Yeah. Yeah, if I can do it, I say, yep, I'll cover. I was sore last week for like five days because I played volleyball for a period, and the kids are saying, when are you coming back? When are you coming back? So I said, soon. I got to get back in shape first. So it's just been a really good start, and I'm just happy to be here. And we have homecoming week next week already. So just, we have dress-up days, we have Powder Puff Monday night. I know it's traditionally Thursday night, but we have a home volleyball game Thursday night, so had to move it to there. Friday, we're going to have Fun Friday, no classes. I just sent sign-up sheets out to kids to have them sign up for volleyball, e-games, spirit signs, cornhole, kickball, so the kids can just sign up for a variety of activities with the intention of just getting to know each other better, have some fun school spirit. I'm encouraging have some fun school spirit. I'm encouraging teachers to create their teams and, and play against each other just to, you know, get to know kids and have teachers see that kids, or kids see that teachers can have fun too, and, and, and all that good stuff. So I'm really looking forward to homecoming week and seeing what, what that looks like here too, so.
Who do we play?
Atlantic. That's for football, probably.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Yeah, so.
Regarding the wrestling, I take it you'll consider that and come back to us?
We can do that, yes.
Would you think the future holds? Is that acceptable?
Yes. Yes.
Very good. Okay, we'll move along to E action items. First of all, we have the personnel report.
Did you say something? You said personnel report?
Yes, personnel report.
We've been busy this, this last month. Looks like we had, okay, so if, if, if a teacher is taking classes, they can move on salary schedule. I'm sure you all know about this. Okay, so we had seven people that continued their education and were able to move on the salary schedule. So those are then listed there. Then if you continue to go down a little bit, those are all our new hires, you guys, for the last month. I think we are set for the kitchens. And we need to get with the elementary to just see kind of where we are at and how many more we need. But we've, we've been busy. And then those are the positions we still have left, classified and certified. So not really much new. Actually, we hired our last elementary cook today. That's why it's still on there. Didn't have time to make the changes. And Brian says, we need subs for the custodians. So we'll be looking for those as well. But been a busy week, or month, for us.
Are these new hires pretty solid, do you feel?
Yeah, we're doing pretty, pretty good, I think.
They're solid in the high school. Our teachers are, or teacher hires.
Is the application pool where you can actually select between many?
We still have a very shallow pool.
Any other discussion or questions about the personnel report? Otherwise, would somebody make a motion to approve the personnel report? So moved by Joe, second by Al.
And that's Monty.
Did I get that right, Kay?
I got it right, yep.
Oh, you got it right, okay. Okay, action item E2 is approval of substitute rates for the 2022 to 2023 school year.
We need to.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes. Thank you.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was a false signal. Nay. Okay, motion carried. And next is our approval of substitute rates for the school year.
So as I had communicated with you, we would like to raise the sub rate from, it's currently $135 to $150 a day. And then the long-term rate would be $177 a day, which that sounds odd, but it's, it's one one-ninetieth of the base salary of a contract. We did a comparability study with schools around us, and we were on the lower end. Many schools have upped, upped their sub because they can't find substitutes at this point, so.
What does Brian have to say about that?
I, I got permission from Brian first.
I bet you need to have something to say.
Actually, this is pretty, it's pretty expenditure neutral though, because it does, it lowers the one and it raises the other.
The sub numbers, I mean, we could always take more substitutes if possible, and pair up professionals who have their sub off has been helpful for us. But then what that does is takes it away from their paraduties and puts them into a, so. But like, I know Jeff was short a couple subs today, so it just depends.
Should have called Casey.
No, I got enough in the.
Just, just one way to recruit, just in case that if you are only 10 or 15 miles in a town around from us, and you're willing to come in versus go there, because theirs were more or the same. So, yeah. Or if you have any other ideas, let us know how to recruit. We did this summer offer free sub off class for people to come in and take it.
Okay, how about a motion to approve the substitute rates for this school year? So moved by, Monty, second by Greg. Okay, number three.
Can we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Now we're up to three. Approval of consortium agreement to jointly administer an instructional program at Children's Square and Heartland Family Service.
So this is just an annual contract that we have with Children's Square and Heartland Family Service in order to be able to, it's with all surrounding communities around Council of Us, because then they're able to send children to Children's Square or Heartland Therapeutic School if needed. So we have children right now that go to Heartland, or to Children's Square, and we have me at Heartland. This just allows us to do that and work from there. So no cost, no, just a MOU.
That's interesting that they list all the towns at the bottom. Do they just?
They have to do that in order for it to be a consortium. So what, what happened probably, I don't even know, six, eight years ago, is Children's Square was its own entity, Heartland Therapeutic was its own entity, and then the legislature, legislature passed laws that said whatever school district you're in, you have to be a part of that. So instead of being private anymore, they had to be a part of, like, in this case, Council of Us schools, because that's the district they're in. So then you had to create this consortium because they're not private anymore. They're part of Council of Us schools.
Do they have some reach out there?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're, they're pretty far away. And that just shows you kind of the, the need for that therapeutic program like we have in other pieces, just because they're, they're out there.
Okay, so a motion for the approval of number three, the approval of consortium agreement, as it says there. I'll read it again. So moved by Al, second by Joe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, next is number four. It's the approval of the special education deficit of $429,113 and some 89 cents.
Okay, just to give you a comparability, last year it was $433,519.44. This year's final figure is $429,113.89, when the original, before the, we had to revise the, the agenda. Last fall, the DE funded, funded a high-cost claim. Anybody that had a high-cost claim in fiscal year '21, they retroactively funded that. When they originally, when you went through and did the special ed supplement, they hadn't put that in there as a DE adjustment. I don't think they realized it till after the fact. So last Friday, I got made aware of this last Friday, late Friday. And so what ended up happening is, is that had to come off of our special ed deficit. We were at $475 and ended up at $429. So those funds actually reduced our special ed deficit. So that just kind of tells you why that happened. As far as comparable to last year, the revenues, including this fully funded high-cost claim, actually went up just about exactly the same as our, what our expenditures went up. So thankfully, that kept it right about the same.
Questions, discussion?
This just gives us the authority to, just so, yeah.
Okay, can we have a, a motion for the approval of the special education deficit? So moved by Greg.
Second.
Second by Joanie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Action item E5, approval of special education contract with Storm Lake Community School District.
So this is a student who is, two students who are in residential facilities, so they don't live at home. And then it's located in Storm Lake, so then their educational, we're responsible for their educational costs. So they bill us for those.
So they reside in Heartland, but they live in Storm Lake?
In Storm Lake, yes. So they bill us just for the educational piece.
These students have been there for a couple, two, three.
But that would be tied back to that special ed deficit that Brian's talking about.
Yeah, directly.
Discussion? Okay, can we have a motion for the approval of the special education contract with Storm Lake? So moved. So moved by Monty, seconded.
Sure, sure.
Joe on that. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Action item E6, select the GHAEA delegate. And that stands for General, or for Green Hills Area Education Administration. Agency.
Yeah, yeah.
Books on that. Better than ours.
So that is, they have a board as well. And Marcus Gross was our, was the representative, and he is, he's getting off of the board. So now we, well, we will be part of selecting the new board member, but because we're the biggest, the biggest school in our area, or have to have the most students, I think there's five of us actually from around. We'll host the meeting here at five o'clock next week. And you don't have to be.
Next month.
Sorry, next month. And you, we just need our delegate, so you guys need to decide who would like to be the delegate at that meeting to cast our vote for the applicants.
What day is the meeting?
Normal, our normal board meeting.
It's the 17th.
Yep, just at five, instead of 5:15. So just need one.
So the delegate will need to be here 15 minutes or?
Yep, just at five. And they said it should not take very long. You just kind of, and they will run the meeting. We're just allowing them to be here. Oh, Catherine's running meetings.
That's right. I don't know if anyone's interested?
What did they tell you? That's the 17th. Takes not. You have to be here if you want.
Yeah, you want, okay. So we have to nominate.
I nominate Alhazza.
And the reason I bring it up, because Al is very experienced and very good with the boards and stuff. Some of us, like me, are a little more novice with these, these things. Get it, okay. Thank you. I'll second. Okay, we have Joe nominated and Greg seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, we got panelists are delegates. Action item E7, policy review schedule, first reading.
There are no changes from the last time.
Yeah, it's pretty easy. It's getting easier because we're, we're not sitting here with years and years of not doing it.
Changes or discussion? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the policy review schedule, first reading? So moved. So moved by Al and seconded.
Second.
By Joanie, thank you. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, action item E8, policy review schedule, second reading. Catherine say about that?
We didn't, I didn't have any of the board members tell me that they would like to see changes, so.
No news is good news?
That's right.
You have good documents. Any other discussion? Otherwise, could we have a motion to approve the policy review schedule, second reading? So moved. So moved by Monty.
I'll second.
We got Joe seconding that. And so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, action item E9, consent agenda. So here we kind of speed through the next items on the back page. We have the minutes for August 15, 2022, and the accounts payable for the month of, I guess, October and September, right, Brian?
August.
August.
August, yes.
I'm efficient, I'm not that efficient.
I don't know.
I would second that here, pretty efficient. Well, I kind of looked through the numbers. I didn't see anything that particularly stood out. I was going to ask on the drive-it work, is there any much progress on that? I didn't have the, the drive-it on the fascia, on the primary school buildings. I think it was, was it?
They, they completed that.
Did they?
Okay, I think that was in last month.
Okay.
They had a little bit of sealing work to, seal, seal work to do, which I don't know they were, they were going to get that this month or next month.
Yeah, that was, wasn't it about $100,000 or something?
All told, and it's going to be all told, it will be.
Pretty satisfied with the work?
We went up, actually, and looked, before they locked, we went and we looked at it. It looks great.
Great.
Looks great.
It's good to see some of those maintenance items get caught up.
No, they, they did a great job.
Any other items that anyone wanted to ask about? And we also have the minutes for last month. Otherwise, we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved by Joe and seconded by.
Second.
Joanie, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Which brings us to the adjournment. Someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, unless there's any other points to bring up? So moved. So moved by Greg.
Second.
Seconded by Monty. Thank you all very much.